That's why we don't need to send people out to people's houses and manually read meters. Unfortunately, the data is showing us right now that about 30% of these endpoints aren't sending updated readings for the meters. And so it would be a large undertaking for current staff to do this. We're not actually staffed to the point where we could, you know, work on maybe 12,000 endpoints. So we want to hire the company that basically helped install this system in the ground to come out and work for a few months and basically get all these endpoints reading again. And then from that point, our staff can take over maintaining them, making sure that, you know, those endpoints stay actively working. And that would be paid out of the water fund, which is already included in the proposed budget. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
Councilman Getz?
If we're not getting 12,000 readings, how does that impact on our revenue? I mean, how do we capture that?
Well, right now, we're having to manually read those. We're sending crews out, you know, we have 10 billing cycles. So our crews are having to work a lot of overtime to basically get those readings in manually. They're having to go out to those endpoints and read those meters individually.
When Johnson Controls was first telling us and selling us on this project, did they tell us that this was something that could happen?
With any technology, this is something that can happen. And honestly, we do charge staff to go out and mitigate these endpoints. Unfortunately, the staff that was working on mitigating these endpoints were logging overtime, trying to get those situations corrected. It found out they weren't really doing their job. So there's been basically a turnover in the water meter shop. We have a new water customer service manager. And so basically, we need to get back to where, you know, we can depend on these electronic meters, you know, send in signals rather than going out and manually read those.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So we had some guys in the department logging a bunch of overtime, not doing anything. And what did we do to these guys? Just terminate them?
Yeah, they no longer work here.
And that's all we did to them?
Yes. Did you?
Is that something that we can discuss in executive session?
If so, I say can.
So council can discuss employees that they manage in executive session. Not necessarily day-to-day stuff. If you want to ask me why we didn't prosecute these individuals to recruit that time, that was not something that was discussed at that point just because of the extent of calculating that. We were able to ascertain that, like, how often it happened. And when we spoke to those employees or confronted them with that information, most of them were pretty forthcoming and kind of took it on the chin. There were some disputes on how much of that time, but it didn't... In speaking with that division manager who uncovered that, it just didn't reach that. And Todd didn't express it, desired it as well. That's not standard practice for the city. Our standard practice is just to terminate those employees. But if there is a desire for council for us to be more litigious, we could do that.
It sounds to me like you're saying that some of it said, well, I still have a little bit of time, but not as much as you're saying.
No, I think, like I said, like we discovered, some of them were... Every situation was different. There were some employees who actually were, you know, saying, you know, I did go home a lot, but I was going home to use the bathroom. And that employee obviously wasn't terminated. He was just, you know, advised because the time he was spending at home, the five, seven minutes or whatever, was consistent with him going to the bathroom as opposed to the individuals who were at home for an extended period of time. And by extended, I mean more than two hours. So that would for exceed a lunch. And so we had employees who were home for a very extended period of time. And so for that purpose, like I said, not every case was different. For the employees who did kind of come in and said, you know, sorry, you got me. And then there were some who were like, well, other people did it too. So it wasn't just consistent across the board. But we did, like I said, have some employees who had legitimate causes for going home. And so we did do the appropriate process with them.
Do we know what period of time this encompassed?
So I think we checked back to December. I think we went all the way back to December. I think they just kept tracing it back to see... Honestly, I don't know why that was a starting point, but I know that we did get into the December months and then forward.
Any other discussion?
I can tell you, we did, well, we standard practice for the city when we have employees who are not truthful about their time. They are separated from the city. It's very... I don't recall as many occasions where we actually try to sue for that money back. Unless, again, at the request of the department head with the approval of the city manager.
All right, thank you.
Well, when it's brought to my attention, of course, we terminated them. But there were discrepancies in stories. There was some that said, okay, I went home, but I was told to go home when I finished. So there were a lot of different stories being tossed around about what happened and what happened. The first I ever heard about any, they were doing it on overtime. That's the first I ever heard that. But they were immediately dismissed and terminated. And I'm not positive, but I think I sent that to y'all in an email that that happened.
You did send it to us. That's how I was somewhat aware. I just didn't know what the discipline and what took place afterwards. But you did make us aware that you determined you detected that. You did.
Okay. Angela, Chief Technology. You're getting blamed for it.
If Todd doesn't mind, if you could scoot back to Todd's last... Because we are also in conjunction with Todd. We're working on the Itron contract as well. And I did just want to, and Jeff can correct me if I'm... Oh, he left. Can correct me if I'm wrong. But a lot of these endpoints, like, for example, the one at my house, I mean, it's fallen apart. So, I mean, they have been in the ground for almost the whole time I've been here, which is 13 years, so like 10 years, seven to 10 years. So they are at the point, talking with the vendor in our meeting, they are at the point where they're needing, some of the ones that haven't had, you know, lawnmowers run over them or whatever, they're not reading because they're just old and need to be replaced. So to give that extra on that as well. Okay?
So on that Itron, this contractor, you're just talking about replacing all of those little black boxes that sit on water meters in the city?
So when we met with the vendor and we provided them the number of endpoints that we have, and they provided us three numbers. They provided us what it would cost with their estimate of the ones that are currently not reading, just replacing the ones that are currently not reading, and what it would cost to replace all of them. And then they recommended that we budget for something in between, which is where the $500,000 comes from. We budgeted what's in between so that when they got out there and started replacing the endpoints, there's going to be some that won't need to be replaced. And then there's going to be some that are reading, probably like mine, that has a crack on the side of it, that will need to be replaced but are currently still reading. So you're going to have a little bit both ways. And so they anticipated that we should, you know, budget for the median.
So I would hope that y'all will find something a little more sturdy. We get a lot of calls, like you said, about lawnmower or weed eater. And then they charge the folks $145. And this one lady called, her meter is three houses down from her house. And, you know, they're trying to hold her responsible for that little deal. You know, I said, you know, we require the folks to cut their grass, and then we put a piece of delicate electronic equipment right in the middle of the yard and tell them something happened to it, you're responsible for it. So I would hope we do get something a little more sturdy that could stand up, that won't be breaking.
Councilman Turner?
To take it a step further, I had, when I first got on council, that's probably was something I was dealing with the most consistently. It was mainly with senior citizens who hired people to come cut their grass. And while that lawnmower company was just coming strictly to do a job, they were consistently being charged over and over again every time they damaged their equipment. And this particular lady barely can get out of bed to even deal with the lawnmower company. So I'm in full agreeance with Councilmember Duryo that if we can get something way more sturdier and do a better job with actual communication and let the citizens know, because seeing that extra charge on your bill, it's inflation right now, things are high, and a lot of these seniors on fixed income, so they kind of freak out when they see those charges on their bill.
I believe Todd and Jeff have been working on something with that as well, with the water meters replacements. The water meter replacements, if they're being billed. Yeah, if there's an audit. Okay, now for me. So information technology is actually comprised of three divisions. We have 3-on-1, we have technology services, and we have telecommunications. 3-on-1 will not be reflected in these slides because their largest budget request was new chairs this year. So we're going to hit the larger projects. So we currently have a spam filter called Spam Titan. We are looking with our... The increase in email takeover for cybersecurity and just the abundance of spam that is coming in on a daily basis. We are looking at a new software that will provide email takeover protection and advanced spam filtering. And it will also allow our users to log in and I'll use Christina with CVB. You know, if she's working on the weekend and it gets caught in the spam filter, our current spam filter, there's nothing she can do about it. Whereas this will allow her, any time of day, she can log in, she can get whatever, she can release whatever she needs. She's actually going to be one of our guinea pigs on the new software. We have the implementation of electronic signatures. We've been moving forward with, since Mr. Williams has come, we have put in place a signature policy. And we're going to move forward with making sure all city departments have the ability to do electronic signatures. We are doing video conferencing upgrades for multiple city facilities, for city communications. This is in response to the strategic plan where it was asked that we have the ability to do more filming and for Lauren and her group to do more of what they need to do. So this will provide two locations at Lakeside as well as the City Hall Conference Room that we had lunch in. Todd's budget software, he's already talked about. And you've already really heard about Good Sam quite a few times. But this is the actual app part. So what Chief talked about earlier was the staff. What we are looking at here is the actual app that when somebody calls in, then it will send, you know, send you a link, then you can pull it up. And then the clinical person on the other end will then be able to view what's going on and make the recommendation. So his part is the staffing and my part is the software. We also have a rollover from this fiscal year to complete the fire toning system that was approved a couple of weeks ago in council. And Paul, you did get something. We have the library print services. To be fair to Paul, it is a carryover because we didn't get to it this year. The surveillance cameras, additional upgrades at multiple locations. We have technology, equipment lifecycle replacement. We do all of our equipment based on... Our computers are done on a five-year lifecycle. Our servers, we try to get a little more out of them if at all possible. We wait until their end of life by the vendor. But we have them spread out in a way that we do about three to five servers a year. And then it's going to also, that number is also going to include replacing CMVRs for your camera system. We have door controllers that are going to have to be replaced at police. We have switching equipment that's going to have to replace all the equipment that makes the technology function. At some point, it reaches its end of lifecycle. And that number is, all of that included for this coming fiscal year. The Safe Fleet Street Sweeping App is... If y'all want to know more about that, I will let Bart explain it. But it's my understanding that it's going to be on these street sweepers. It will allow for citizens to see the route of the street sweepers. It will allow for us to monitor and provide security on the street sweepers. And from their budget requests, there's quite a number of other things that it's going to be able to do as well, if you have any questions about that.
Councilman Turner?
Just want to show you your respect, man. So basically saying this equipment can monitor and kind of track and keep up with locations and things of that magnitude just caught my attention after what we just discussed. That's why, you know, I wanted to make sure I understood it.
Yes, and I mean, it will map out the street sweeper's map of the location. And then it will also show, we'll be able to show citizens the route that it's taken. So if you're curious, you know, did my street get swept today? You'll be able to see that it was, it did get swept or it did not for a certain amount of time.
Yes, this is mainly stemming from the fact that we report the road miles that are run by the sweepers every year. We put that in our monthly report. But citizens, probably our main complaint from a citizen is, you haven't swept my street in who knows how long. And it turns out that we swept it two weeks ago, but it's the fall and there's leaves coming down. And so this will allow us to track and visually, graphically, show what's been swept, make sure we haven't missed anything, which I really don't think we have. But it gives visual graphical proof to the citizens of what's been swept and when. So it's kind of similar to what we've been doing, showing pothole requests, showing street rehab, and putting that on a map to where it's easy for citizens to see what we've done and when. And this just extends this into street sweeping.
And the app meaning it's tied into our website. You don't have to download an app for that.
We will be doing a cybersecurity audit for the regional radio system. It says 68,000. We front that as we do with all the other radio pieces, but then it is reimbursed by other cities in the cog. So we will not be responsible for the full 68,000. We will be upgrading our end-of-life phone system and equipment. Our current phone system has reached end-of-life. We will be moving to the next version of the Mitel system. And there will be several phones that were installed approximately 13 years ago that will no longer work on the new system, so we will have to replace those as well. And then... Sorry, I got distracted. Water customer service portal was, Councilman Getz had talked about it a while back, I believe, several months ago. It is going to be $35,000, and we have budgeted for that implementation in the next year.
So how will that work? Where customers log on to a site and be able to see in real time what their water usage is?
Yes, sir.
That's wonderful, thank you.
And again, on the website available?
Yes, we will link out from the website.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hello again. HR is combined with benefits. So I just wanted to point out, we talked about this earlier. The premiums for employee benefits on the employee side is increasing. Medical 10% and dental 3%, and this is every pay period. So an employee with, on the family plan, it'll go up about $18 per pay period for 2024. So we just want to point out the fact that those increases are going to be burdened with the employees. Dental 3%, that's just a few percentage points. So I included that with the increase for $18 per pay period for medical and dental per pay period on a family plan. So I just want to point that out. We've talked about this many times. We are very happy that the minimum wage increase. We are proposing $15 per hour for the full-time employees. As you know, it's been $13. We did that last summer, but there's a need to increase that given the inflation and cost of goods and services. We want to acknowledge our public service employees, and we do that every year. However, every other year, we do a week-long version of it. So we ask for $10,000 to this year's budget. It's the week-long recognition. We do something every day of the week. May do donuts, ice cream, snow cones, popcorn. Last year, we did a door decoration contest. So we'll probably do something like that similar this time. And we always end with the city employee lunch, usually on a Thursday, to allow for all employees to join. This is something new. We've been trying to put together a residential incentive program for our first responders. So police, fire, and EMS are directly involved with this. You see the cost under each. These are estimations based on the percentage of the employees that live in Beaumont. So in 2024, we're going to do the same for police, fire, and EMS. And we're going to offer to help with $4,000 down payment assistance and $500 moving assistance, purchase or rent. And this is a recruiting tool, but it also encourage our first responders to live in the city. And we want to remain competitive with other entities close to us.
How will that work exactly? Can you elaborate a little bit?
So with the residential incentive program, and these are one-time payments, but if you have a first responder that is interested in purchasing a home, as a sworn employee, the city will assist them in down payment assistance and moving assistance. So closing costs.
Up to what level?
It's up to $4,000, right?
Okay, so, okay.
Councilman Duryo?
Chris, on this slide here, what, okay, it says $4,000 down payment assistance, and then it's the $62,400 out there, what is that?
So the $62,400 is an estimation based on the amount of sworn police officers that live in the city and may continue those trends. So it's currently at 37% of the force that live in Beaumont. And so the down payment assistance is 10% of the amount that lives in Beaumont. And the moving assistance to purchase or rent, I'm sorry, 10% for the moving assistance to purchase a rent because it encompasses purchasing and rent. And then the down payment assistance would be 5% of that force. So those are all estimations of what it could look like in the 2024 year.
So the reason the numbers are different is because of the amount of folks that live in Beaumont?
Right, and police has more than fire and then EMS is third with, you know, with their numbers.
Councilman Turner?
Chris, I appreciate y'all looking into this. It's a step in the right direction, but I still want to echo to the city managers, a huge concern of mine of the number, the numbers of individuals that don't. You know, we're looking at the budget that we just spoke about earlier, and we were at roughly 58%. And these are some of our best-paying jobs in the city. And to see the numbers and where we at and how much we're spending on it, I just want to really put a real hard focus on maybe working with both chiefs on seeing how we can at least look at a possible property tax back from. I understand they eat sometimes with sales tax, but it's really alarming to me with the amount of the budgeting.
And I couldn't understand you said something about property tax, I'm sorry.
Yeah, with them living here, of course, it'd be, you know, investing back into the community with property tax. And with it being 58% of the budget, both entities, that's pretty alarming to me, the amount of people that actually do reside within our city. So I just want to keep a tunnel vision focused on that. I know this is a good step in the direction, but anything else you think we can do, I'm just open to it.
Yeah, we've had these discussions before in different scenarios and different settings to come up with incentives. And we came up with this policy. And this is to get them to move into Beaumont or live in Beaumont for sure. So yeah, well, I'll continue to have conversations with both chiefs that that is a priority for city council and for myself too, for that matter, that we get officers, firemen, and EMS people who reside here.
Yes, Councilman Neal?
So what kind of restrictions are you putting on this? For, I mean, how long do they have to live there?
Not a rental property?
You know, we're not sure how this program works down the line. However, this will be a system that will be audited when you're doing audits for addresses and things of that nature. When we put this program in place, you're going to have to check those out on a yearly basis.
I know, but do you, I mean, if we're going to give somebody money, don't you want them to be there more than 12 months? I mean, it's, there'll be some type of rules.
Yeah, it's not going to get it prorated if they leave or go somewhere else to pay a portion of it back based upon, that's kind of how we're looking at it with the EMS program. This one is not as developed, although police contractor just started the conversation with them to get this going. But my vision for council member is to put some stipulations on it on time periods and how long they have to reside here or work for us, otherwise pay us back.
Yeah, the incentives we normally have are a three-year commitment. This could be similar.
Question?
Councilman Getz?
So does this have to be part of the contract or is this outside the contract?
That's a part of the police contract that allows for it to happen. You know, and it can be done with the authority of the city manager in the contract.
What about fire?
I'm not sure about the fire contract 100%, so... But the police contract does.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Councilman Duryo?
Do you currently, on those civil service exams to be hired, do you give extra points to citizens of Beaumont?
Right, there's a process where there are extra points dedicated to citizens of Beaumont.
Yeah.
There is.
Okay, will this be available to any other city employees?
Just first responders for now.
Ms. Shray, you were saying, did you have some knowledge about the fire contract?
No, it's not current, it's not in the current fire contract, but the contract does go up for renegotiation next year.
So we can't do that until after that period of time?
You can open up or renegotiate the contract at any time if you wanted to add to the contract. I'm sure that they wouldn't, I'm sure the union would love that, so I don't think they would balk at it. But we would, it's something that you could just add or implement with the contract.
It would mainly, from my perspective, be targeted to new hires, which wouldn't be subject to the contractual... subject to the contractual obligations.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Well, good afternoon. It's been a long day, but I got, I come with good news. I'm not asking for anything. No money at all. I'm just coming to highlight some of the things we've done in public health. And the reason why public health budgets kind of stays the same, a lot of my programs is funded by grant funds. And so that's why my program's kind of main the same. So just to highlight some things that we've done. In vital statistics, that's the department where you get your birth and death records. And in August of last year, it went live where you can pay for it online. Previously, you had to go to the website, download the application, fill it out, and mail it in. And now you can take care of everything online, and the citizens love it. Then we have to even come up to the health department, you can click a box, have it mailed to you. Or if you click a box saying, I'm going to pick it up in person, then you'll get an email and a text to let you know when it's ready. So you don't have to just wait around to come get it. Environmental health, so far as the applications for permits is the same with City Works. You can do everything online, and also with increase in food trucks. And that's something that will be coming before you guys more often. What we do, we actually just had one yesterday, we conduct quarterly meetings with our food truck vendors. And the reason for that is, is to, as you can see up there, to, to discuss changes in the food code and to address their concerns as well, and also to help them become compliant. Also, in March of this year, council approved, adopted the, the new ordinance for, for environmental health. And in that, we improved the grading system and the placement of the inspection reports. In the old food code, the wording was it had to be placed in a conspicuous location. And so now it has to be placed at the entrance of the restaurant. So along with the inspection report. Also, again, with food trucks being on the rise, we also started a, constructed a starter guide that we have on our Facebook page as well as our website to guide them through, if you want to get into the food truck business, you need to follow these steps. And so we've done it. Next slide, Tina. Also, with our immunizations department, we continue to collaborate with BISD to increase vaccination rate amongst school-aged kids, and we're extremely busy right now with the start of school. And we do offer vaccines for Beaumont citizens, and it's just, you don't have to live in Beaumont to receive vaccines from us. But you have to qualify uninsured, underinsured, which means you have insurance, but your insurance does not cover vaccines, and if you're on Medicaid. Also, as you can see, we administer in excess of 65,000 COVID-19 vaccines, and we're still in the process of offering those vaccines. And, and there's just a side note, COVID is increasing in our city. From June to July, it went up 189% increase in the number of COVID cases, so be careful. I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but this is significant increase, even though the number that you see reported is low, because we only account for if you took a test at a medical facility. It doesn't take in account people who use the home test. Okay? So, next slide. Also, we have a diabetes program that's free to the city. It's held every Wednesday at the Lakeside Center at 10 o'clock, and we have two of our health educators that puts on that program. Also, with that, you know, we have ways that the community can contact us with public health concerns, and what we do at Public Health is on our Facebook page, we released, we release a report on different infections or different things that's going on within our city, or things that's happening within our country. For example, there's an outbreak of leprosy in central Florida. It's endemic, got 15 reported cases. So we kind of release that information to inform our community what's going on. Also, we're, we're analyzing our death records to determine the top 10 causes of death in our city, as well as our STI, which stands for sexually transmitted infection. And we're looking at this data to determine education, target audience, and location to improve the community health outcomes. And then from that, we'll be putting out a newsletter just to inform our community of the public health events and concerns. Any questions? Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members, city manager. Mine will be pretty brief, just about four slides. The Solid Waste Division deal with basically once-a-week collections of our garbage, yard waste, and miscellaneous trash. Pick up about 36,000 households a month. We're looking at increasing the rate by a dollar per month, which would generate about $36,000 a month. Next slide, please. We operate a type-one landfill. We're looking at increasing that rate by $1 per cubic yard for compacted as well as non-compacted trash that enters the landfill. That'd generate about $750,000 a year. Next slide, please. We are looking at adding four new vehicles to our fleet to replace some of, some of our outdated units. That's going to cost about $1,004,000 this year. Next slide, please. This is our gas project that OCI is working with the city of Beaumont on. We're pretty much on schedule with it. Our first major mod is just about complete. The technical part is complete. It's going out to the surrounding citizens to see if they have any comments. If not, that part of it will be complete. We go out for another mod, which is just in mod. It doesn't have to go out to the public. It's in progress. That should be pretty simple. They should start construction. Maybe in about the next nine to 10 months, you should see a facility out there and start generating some revenue. Any questions, please? Have a great day.
Councilman Getz has a question.
I don't, I do not have a question. I have a compliment. Your department does an incredible job, not that any other department in Beaumont doesn't, but you know, when I look at what y'all do, and I see some of the troubles some of our neighboring cities have, I marvel at how efficient you are, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize somebody with me. I have two real major team members with me. I have Felicia Joseph, she's been with me 30 years. She run my collection division. I have a Mr. Dwayne Matthews, he been with me 30 years. He run my landfill. Those two people are very key to me, and one of them should take my place when I leave. Have a good day.
Okay, plug.
We don't want you to leave.
You heard it, huh?
Good afternoon, we're almost there. I'm going to move this way down. There you go. Thanks, Tina. So our budget request for FY24 is a senior PR position. It is to further our strategic plan initiative of proactive city communication. So to date, I have handled the media inquiries that have come in, but it has primarily been reactive, as we're a small but mighty department of three, and it is quickly becoming a full-time job. This person primarily will be tasked with liaising between all these wonderful other departments and finding the good stories and proactively taking them to the media versus them coming to us for specific inquiries. So when you hear about the amazing things that solid waste are doing, we can go tell those stories. When you hear about this amazing new piece of equipment that the Parks Department is doing, we can take those stories to the media. So we really just want to control the narrative a little bit more. We track what's being said about us in the news and the sentiment every single month, and it is slowly going up, but the sentiment is not necessarily getting better. So we are just looking to improve that, and we appreciate your support in that endeavor. We'd also like to highlight a few things we've done this year. By far, the biggest project was the website, which hopefully y'all have played around with a little bit. I just wanted to take a second to shout out my team for that. It was a huge effort. About eight months of work, 400-plus pages, and it wasn't just taking the existing content and migrating it. We really looked at every single page and thought about what a citizen would need to do it better, to be more efficient, to find what they need. So some new features that are there. The ability to sign up for notifications of any single section via email or text, 100-plus language translations, predictive search, ADA mobile-friendly design that you can use on your cell phone, a staff directory, an FAQ database, and all those are really designed to provide two-way communication to the citizens. There's a giant help box on the homepage. We want you to get your questions and concerned answered, questions and concern answered, and get their inquiries to you and get the answers back. So I really appreciate the team effort. That was Paige Reed in my office, Angela Wright and Jamie Nelson in IT, and our staff liaison, June Ellis in the executive office. We also, and just a cute, quick little look at the website if you haven't played with it yet. We also implemented our communications department handbook. As a department officially for about 11 months now, we finally have some official guidelines and policies about how the other departments can work with us. That was a long process with an outside consultant who helped us do that. We also updated the city's social media policy, and will be something we'll be updating annually, just based on new case law. We also held the first social media training for elected officials, so thank you for all who took the time to attend that and familiarize yourself with best practices. We've also been meeting with the department marketing liaisons to go over also, anyone who touches the Facebook and is a representative of the city on social media to go over those best practices. In addition, we held the first media training for department directors and department media contracts, contacts. We had two consultants come in from Houston to give us on-camera interview tips and training. And we've recently launched the new city manager podcast and quarterly newsletter, which will be going out, to again, just increase different channels of communications with the citizens. Some exciting things are upcoming, if you can go to the next slide. State of the City is by far our biggest project right now, so I'll be looking to you all to work on that with me soon. It'll be a completely different look this year, and we really want to get people excited about what's coming in Beaumont, and to take pride in saying I am from Beaumont. On that note, we're also working on the 100 Things to Do in Beaumont book. That's to change the narrative of Beaumont's boring, there's nothing to do here. You can say, hey, here's 100. In conjunction with that, we're also launching a bucket list passport with the CVB, same kind of reasoning. Just wipe that Beaumont is boring from your mentality, here's 100 things to do here. And continuing to educate our department marketing liaisons on best practices for social media, marketing, any kind of different tactics that they're using to communicate with the public. Any questions for me?
Y'all could be looking for your email about your, your role and your script for the upcoming State of the City. The communication department has been using much creativity to engage with everyone, and city council, I'll, I'll get to be engaged with the community through this.
And if you have any issues with the script, you can take it up with Mayor Roy West.
I'm sure everybody's going to love the script. I didn't write any part of it, but it is pretty awesome. You got to be there September.
21st.
21st, 2023. Yes.
Lauren, I just wanted to compliment you on our, our social media growth. I watched our page grow by thousands of followers. I kind of been tracking it since you first started, and I wanted to compliment you on it. It was pretty stagnant, it wasn't moving. When I first got on the council, we were stuck around at 116, we were stuck around at 16,000 mark, but our Facebook has grown tremendously, and our Instagram has grown by thousands of followers, so I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Great job on the website as well.
Thank you.
So we obviously saved the best for last. The Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau, Dean Conwell is the executive director. And let's talk about ROI. First of all, the, the state of Texas actually relinquished, the, the 2022 year, we actually had 367.1 million. So that's 367.1 million in direct visitor spending in Beaumont, Texas. It's the highest revenue sales ever. What's so important about that is you have to understand that even with Hurricane Laura, where people were living here for, you know, seven, eight months' time, it was so difficult for us to ever actually achieve a higher revenue sales than a hurricane season. So it's really, really exciting that we're able to do it this close coming back from COVID. So as we go through some of the FY23 major initiatives, we hosted a free three-day mural festival, high attendance, high diversity. We completed the addition of 17 murals, received over $4.5 million of value in free media pickups, and over 2 million social media impressions. Huge, huge numbers. We also completed a nature trail that connects the CCC building and Cattle Marsh Welling's, with so much more to come in FY24. We developed an attraction pass. It's a one-stop-shop access to 14 museums and attraction that's valid for a three-day period. So it's great because visitors are able to come in, spend anywhere from $23 to $27, and have a three-day pass of all the museums and attractions, all on their app. Really exciting is our birding between borders. It's a cooperative birding marketing campaign with Lake Charles CVB. Cooperative marketing campaigns in, in between cities is rare, let alone states. This is huge because we are obviously becoming a highlight and birding destination, because Cattle Marsh this year has now been recognized as a world-renowned birding destination. These are big, big numbers, and it's going to increase our tourism, as well as our book business. Our sales team is doing an incredible job. For FY23, we had 109 meetings, tournaments, and reunions. And also, to add on to that, community relations, we collaborated with 52 community events, and we've worked with over 87 local organizations. Really, really, really important for our initiatives. So let's look into FY24. So we have actually proposed two budget additions. A Beaumont Bash in Austin, Texas for $25,000, and Simple View, a new web design with GA4 metrics for $65,000. I'm going to include a little bit more on the next slide. So we are so excited to introduce FIVA Beaumont. It will be a completely new website, and it will be completely in Spanish. Mexico is actually one of the highest-targeted markets for Houston area, and they have been targeting them for a little over seven years now with Ola Houston. This is going to bring in a huge ROI as we target the Hispanics specifically in Mexico, but it's also going to be great for our community as we are able to showcase everything there is to see and do in Beaumont in Spanish. We're really excited. We also are creating a neighborhood marketing strategy to promote diversity. We're going to bring Loca back, the Lower Calder Initiative, we're going to bring a Coolahio College, as well as the left and right side of I-10. So we're really, really excited as that incorporates a lot of your wards, and we'll be focusing on visitor touchpoints. So we're going to be actually going into businesses and hotels and being able to talk to the actual people who are at the front desk, because they're the ones who interact with the visitors. So whether you're a server in a restaurant, you're being asked, what is there to do in Beaumont, or what else is there to see? Instead of they saying, you know, there's nothing necessarily to do, they'd be able to showcase so many great things there are to see and do here. And then the Beaumont Bash, so this is an advocacy effort to bring a taste of Beaumont to Austin for legislators and media in advance of the next legislative session. For Golden Triangle Days, as you can see, because they're in session, it's very difficult to necessarily get their time. I mean, what we're really excited about is we're ready to bring gators to the Capitol. We really want to make a big stunt and try to get some publicity, because we love media, and Austin media means Austin visitors. So think of it like that, because it's really, really exciting. And the later Ladies in Leather Motorcycle Parade, this is coming up September 8th to the 10th. We already have over 1,000 booked rooms. It's huge that the sales team is able to do this. And just think of all the business the sales team is bringing in without a convention center. So so much is on the rise as we continue to work through it. And then finally, our huge initiative is going to be diversity, equity, accessibility, and inclusion. We really want to make sure that our destination is more inclusive, and we'll be welcoming those disabilities. As we include a wheelchairs guide, we also have an autistic guide to Beaumont, and several other guides that will be there to not only bring in and welcome those with disabilities, but will also be used by those who are locals looking for things to do. Does anyone have any questions? I promised five minutes. But I wanted to tell y'all everything, because it's really exciting stuff. And then very lastly, we look for a revenue source. So we'll be taking our Beaumont gift shop, that's actually incurred a little over $20,000 this previous year, and we'll be putting it on. this previous year, and we'll be putting it online. And not only are we going to be selling these gifts that we've been selling in our gift shop, but we're going to be making Welcome to Beaumont packages. We'll be making Homesick for Beaumont to send out to college students, and even Foodie for Beaumont. So several different ideas to try to draw in and increase our revenue.
Councilman Turner.
Man, man, I really enjoyed the energy at the end. He kind of got us all piped back up. But you kind of spoke to your making all these things happen and generating revenue without a convention center. Can you kind of speak to the importance of a convention center to a department like CBB?
It is exponential. We've actually researched several cities, including Irving, Texas, who have made such substantial impacts because of the ROI that can be obtained from the convention center. And I think that what's really interesting is not just the size of the groups, but the fact that having a hotel attached to it allows for the accessibility, so that even a convention center with maybe 500 to 700 delegates that would need to go offsite to offsite properties, allows for hotels in the area to also buy into this hotel downtown. I think more business is more revenue. And the fact that there are 1,000 motorcyclists going to be in town from all over the United States proves that Beaumont is accessible, you're able to easily get off Interstate 10, and our area can hold that many people. So just imagine when we have a venue that can hold that many people as well.
Well said. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Christina. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder of the budget calendar and next steps. August 11th, we'll file the proposed budget with the city clerk's office. August 15th will be the presentation of the proposed budget. August 29th is the public hearing where we receive public comments on the budget and the CIP. And September 12th will be the public hearing where you actually adopt the budget capital program and accept the praise rolls. And then October 1, October 1, new fiscal year begins. Just a few notes, thanks for the feedback today. It's clear that you want to larger your own fund balance, so we'll be working on that this week and coming back with that before the budget is submitted. We'll do some numbers, we'll make some adjustments or cuts as needed to get that to a larger number, for sure. Likewise, we'll be putting some plans together to build up the water and wish water fund balance numbers too. While they're in a better position over the long run, we'll be working on that. The healthcare plan for employees and savings is clear through the report there that there's a great opportunity for us to save some dollars. So we're looking at some programs, so what we can do there to save some money. And for our classification plan, we'll be looking for an opportunity to pay our civilian employees, give them some consideration in that, either through that plan or cost of living, because I swear on people are getting in this. It's difficult not to have your civilian employees to be justly compensated. And we'll just continue to identify savings going into the 2025 budget starting now. So we'll be working toward those goals. If you have any other goals that you want to comment, be glad to hear them out there. Again, I'd like to thank staff for the work they've done. I'd like to thank Todd Semenow and his staff, Amy and Cheryl. Stand up, Amy and Cheryl. Let's give them a hand. They got to hang out a little bit today and not get in the line of fire, so they're good. So we thank all the staff and all the work that you've done, and your patience too with this process. Likewise, say to council, June and Chris, you and all those meetings to everybody. So thank you, thank you, council.
All right, we'll start over here with Councilman Nild, since he's been traveling.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to say thank you to the city manager and your staff for the presentations today. It was a lot of information to take in and look forward to seeing the budget here next week.
Councilman Samuel.
Same thing, ditto. Well, well done. Thank you so much, city manager and staff, great job.
Councilman.
Thank you to staff, I got to spend the whole day with you guys. I appreciate it.
Councilman Getz.
I really want to thank the city manager, as well as the staff, for bringing this new way of looking at the city budget to council, having your department heads come before council. It's similar to like what the county does, where they have, you know, their various departments come in and they talk about what their needs are and what their projected expenses are going to be. And that's going to even be more so next year when we go to this, you know, you got justify everything type of approach. But this is, this was a great and pleasant change, so thank you, much appreciate it.
Councilman Durio.
Well, yes, same thing. Thank you, staff, city manager. I still see we have a couple of citizens sitting out there to stay for the whole thing. Appreciate your presence. And it's like every, many times when I go out and speak, and I talk about the city manager, or KW, like we like to call him, brought a brand-new set of eyes to look at our same old problems and come up with better solutions. And that's what he doing, and we sure appreciate it, we sure need it. Good job, everybody. And especially you, Todd, and your, your staff. You know, you have some good news, you have some bad news, but you had news. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. City attorney?
So we had a very special guest with us today. Nikki chose probably the worst day on the planet to shadow me, but she has been enduring the budget workshop process and just visiting with some of the members of my staff to see what it's like to be a city attorney. So thank you, Nikki, for your patience and sharing the day with us. And also, that's it, so.
Awesome. Public works.
I'll, I would think one of the citizens mentioned something about a camera on college, and that is a frequent request, that somebody has an accident and wants video from the intersections. Those cameras only detect traffic for the purpose of the action of the signal itself. They are not recorded, so we do not have video for any of those intersections.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
June. Tina? Yeah, yeah, I'll come back to you.
I wanted to recognize June Ellis. Everybody sent their PowerPoint presentations to him, and he put all of that together and did a fabulous job. So thank you, June.
Great job.
I have a fair announcement from our communications department from Lauren, and she probably would beat me up if I don't give them before we leave. She said today is the last day to take the survey, if you have a preference on council meeting times. And you can scan the QR code on a flyer at the back of the room, or it's linked on Facebook or our website. And by the way, our website is fantastic, I love it too. Thursday night is Jazz at the Lake. Join us for free music at the event center for eight, from eight, 8:10. That's the date, 8:10. Public Health is hosting a free community health fair on Saturday, August 12th. Fall ages offering back-to-school immunizations. And the Citizen Police Academy is restarting soon. It's a free 14-week program offered by PD. You can learn more and sign up on their website. Then there's classic movie night every Friday this month at the Jefferson Theater. Please join us. And all of August, animal care is. And you'll clear the shelter event with discount adoption fees. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Durio.
I just wanted to thank everybody for the birthday wishes, appreciate it.
Happy 30th.
Yeah.
His birthday was Sunday.
Happy 30th, young man.
Well, I enjoyed the budget workshop as well today, and certainly appreciate all the hard work all the departments have put in too. And I know there's a little bit more work to be done, but it's, it's appreciated, and I know there was a lot of time. The neighborhood associations, they're continuing, there's another one tonight. I appreciate all our citizens that participate, or residents that participate in the neighborhood associations. It gives a chance to get some direct feedback to the city, so please continue to do that. Since we've had multiple, I certainly know that this council, we all care about due process and following procedures, and when it comes to criminal cases, that is what we do. And although people have opinions on what that is, there is a judicial process that we will follow and continue to follow with all residents, as well as any law enforcement officer that's involved, because we believe that process has been proven for a couple hundred years now. And the city poll, city council poll for the time, I'm glad he got that plug in, this is the last day, so be sure to get on that. It gives you three different times, so we could just be getting started. So look at it that way, you'd be well rested. And school is starting back. I know several schools have started. BISD starts tomorrow, so be aware of the kids on the road, be aware of at crossings. Also, there's going to be, the school zones will be enforced again, those, so be aware of that. And thank you for the city website. If you hadn't been to it, it is terrific, and it answers a lot of questions on a lot of things. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank y'all.